Notice of a Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act Notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, a work session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 4, 2018, at 5:20 PM, 5:30 PM, and at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers and City Managers Conference Room on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with Executive Session. Executive Session A: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
Motion to move to Executive Session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
We will now begin with our regular scheduled meeting. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation, under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord, as we enter this season where we celebrate the birth of your son, Lord, we ask you to help each of us to share your truth in love, blessing each other and loving each other in a way that'll glorify you. And Lord, for this meeting here tonight, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor, each of the commissioners, and everybody that presents anything. Lord God, for the best for the City of Brownsville. Help us to be able to discuss things honestly and openly and still stay in unity in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen. We now have the mayor's activity update.
The only thing I would like to have the public know that we want to welcome our new city manager. Appreciate you joining us. We welcome you to the City of Brownsville and look forward to working with you and all these fine people from Brownsville. So Noel, welcome. Thank you. And that's my report.
Next, we have the Commissioner's Activity Update.
I would like to thank, let's see, I believe it was Planning and Main Street and Library Services. If I forgot, someone please apologize for the wonderful end-of-the-year sequoia last weekend. The tree is gorgeous. The energy was spectacular. And it was wonderful not only to experience that but to see the new businesses and restaurants around Market Square that are now thriving and participating in that energy. So thank you very much for your work, and that's what I have to say. And of course, Commissioner Longoria's music was wonderful.
Merry Christmas.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I want to take this opportunity, once again, to welcome Noel to the staff. Thank you so very much. And I want to invite, take this opportunity to invite the community this Saturday at noon at the Southmost Library. I'm going to be doing the annual Christmas reading. We had done it with another organization in the past, but we have since then ceased working together. So took it upon myself with staff to be able to do the reading. So we're going to do the reading this Saturday at the Southmost Library at noon. Adults and children are invited. We have a book that's going to be distributed to the children, but we also are going to have, we changed it up, and we have a book that's going to be going out to adults also. So we want to invite the community to please come by and join me. Come by and join us so that we can continue with our annual reading. I want to be able to continue that. So we're going to be having our reading on Saturday at the Southmost Library at 12:00 noon. Thank you.
Appreciate that very much, Commissioner. That's a great, great, great project.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to thank city staff once again for putting together my Commissioner Tetchwood Town Hall. It was a wonderful success, and I want to thank Christina Garza who put together and worked so hard to make sure that we had a very successful, in all of the departments, the airports, Public Works, 546 Help, the Health Department, I want to make sure, and most importantly, well, I love you all, right, but the bark, the bark for going. You all gave a wonderful presentation to my constituents and a lot of people throughout the community that showed up. It's televised. You can catch it on Brownsville TV or on the YouTube channel. And we were so informed, you gave us an update on the airport, on things going on with the illegal dumping in the Health Department. Again, if you have illegal dumping in your neighborhood or area, 546 Help, we will be out there that day, if not the next day, to pick it up and issue tickets. If you know who it is, please take pictures. License plates are always very helpful. They help us prosecute. But the most successful story of the night was a baby cocker spaniel that I, I can say I smuggled it into the event center because pets are not allowed unless it's a service dog. But I smuggled a baby cocker spaniel from the shelter, this beautiful baby puppy who had been a drop-off. Somebody didn't want it, so they left it at the shelter. And we all know the statistics of animals that are dropped off. It's not very good. So this one dog, we took it to the event center, and it was adopted that night. So I would say all in all, a life was saved, and it was a very successful night. I will tell you another thing, that if you go to our app right now, Access Brownsville, you can go to the Apple Store or Google Store, and if you type in Brownsville, you'll find the All Access app. And I'm going to give you an Easter egg. Right now, there is a coupon on that if you're looking to adopt a pet, and I believe it's a 50-off coupon. So 50 off your adoption. Am I right, City Manager? It's 50 off? Yes? If it's not, we'll have to honor the price, so go get your dog. It is. It's 50% off. So, you know, for 20 bucks and change, or what does it come out to, the 50-off app? How much is it?
I don't know, Mayor, Commissioner. So it comes down to the spay neuter and the vaccines.
Microchip.
And the microchip. Yeah, and it's for $50. We discounted the half-price at this time?
$25.
Yes.
So if you need a pet for Christmas, by the way, you have to be very careful about the way you gift pets, right? You've got to make sure that the person wants them, right? But if you are looking to make the commitment to your family for Christmas and have a pet that is the most enduring gift ever, they become family members. Those of you parents who, a kid wants a baby brother or sister, go to the animal shelter and adopt a cat or a dog for $25. How long is that coupon good for?
So we have a rotating menu of different sales. Veterans is permanent, law enforcement, city employees, those are permanent, but we have a few other things that we are rotating right now.
Excellent. Do you have any additional?
Just, as you said, Commissioner, we're going to go ahead and honor that.
50 off. Excellent. So that's your chance. Head down to the shelter. Also, we're taking donations for Christmas. You want to do something in spirit for the holiday season. Our animal shelter is always looking for toys, beds, food, treats, anything like that. And also, another really good cause that we had there at my town hall was the Christmas for Kids from our Police Chief Pascal in Brownsville Police Department. So we are collecting toys. I know the fire department has one too. So you could also stop at any fire station throughout the month of December and drop off a toy, and we will make sure that it goes to a child that knows that the community of Brownsville, we have each other's back, and we are one. And the holiday season is one that we all have to remember each other in those in need. So I encourage you to visit the police, fire station, and the shelter this Christmas. And, oh, one more thing. There was a sinkhole on Los Emanos, and I want to thank the Brownsville PUB and Brownsville City Works. They worked really well together to make sure that that sinkhole is repaired at 100%. Anytime you drive, I drive over it daily to get to work, and I don't have to worry about anything, I promise you. So I just want to thank Public Works and PUB for working so close together to make sure that that was repaired in a timely fashion and that people are able to get to work when they need to cut through there, you get to the expressway. So that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have the City Managers' Update.
Mayor and Commissioner Members, good evening. So this is my first update, and I'd like to face the community somewhat as I speak. First of all, I am very honored and humbled, and thank you for the support and the confidence. It's been quite the ride to get here, so I appreciate your patience in getting my family here in one piece, my five-year-old, my 11-month-old, my lovely wife. But the community's been very receptive, and I appreciate that tremendously. My family and I appreciate that. Thank you for your time. Last week, I did have a soft start last week. Those one-on-ones were very valuable. I know that the community members, as I visit different events, they want to hear me say my two cents about the vision and what are you going to do for us. And I'm pretty much a broken record right now. The only thing I want to say is there's a 100-day plan in place, and I've told the same to staff, and that's for clarity. The focus is to be visible. The focus is to build relationships, and the focus is to learn about Brownsville. And that will involve about 25, at least, one-on-one meetings from people that you all have mentioned that I should meet with. I have been at the Sequovia Nights. That was great last Friday. I was at the parade last night. And there are other events that I have planned. But ultimately, Mayor, I think the biggest thing is, it's all about relationships. There'll be time to talk about results, strategy, and structure, and all those things, and vision. I know that was all over the brochure. I believe I've done my research, and I know what I got into. And there will be some challenges, but that's okay. It's not supposed to be pretty when you're in this seat. My focus is to add value and to be of service and to provide leadership to you, to the community, to the organization, and at the end of the day, to serve. Public service first. So that's about it. That's my spiel. It's about the 100-day plan, so I'll get out and about. I have received emails, and I have had people wanting to speak to me and interview me and such, but it'll take some time, you know? Past Day 40, I'll be more flexible. I just want to have those one-on-ones, if I can, with some of those stakeholders. So operationally, there are some updates. The Human Resources Department is working on several projects. One of those is the employee forms are being put on the HR website. There are some standard operating procedures for in-house applications that we're also working on. We're also working in conjunction with the Management and Information Systems Department to digitize some forms in the HR department. And also, we're creating a database for training videos, along with having the policy manual updated. And finally, there's a road closure here between East Elizabeth and Washington Streets on 10th Street from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM for some scheduled construction, so that'll be tomorrow. That's all I have, and look forward to working with you and the community.
Again, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Next, we have presentations. First, we have Employee of the Month, Ms. Miriam Torres, Fiscal Technician from the Finance Department.
Good evening, our mayors and commissioners. It's my honor today to introduce Miriam Torres, Fiscal Tech, as the Employee of the Month for the month of December. Ms. Torres has been with the city for 11 years. She has been working since February 2007. She currently holds a position of Fiscal Tech 1 with the Finance Department. From the start, Ms. Miriam has always shown the desire to learn and accept additional duties, as well as find ways to improve work processes. She's a team player, a reliable employee, and her work has always produced above expectations. The employees looked upon her peers as a person of knowledge in current processes. Her attendance is excellent, and she finishes tasks accurately and timely. As Employee of the Month, get a pin saying you're an outstanding employee, a watch, and a plaque designating you as Employee of the Month.
And she qualifies for the Employee of the Year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this nomination. I'd like to thank my director, Mr. Granado, Mr. Santi Yan, my coworkers. It's been an honor working in that department. I enjoy my work a lot, and I'm going to try to do my best, the best of my knowledge, and I do appreciate it.
Yeah, congratulations very much. How about everyone?
Next, we have the Mobile Vendor Food Court Summary.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. A Committee of Community Stakeholders and City Departments was established in 2015 to consider the future of food truck parks in Brownsville. The committee determined that allowing mobile vendor food courts, commonly known as food truck parks, would be in the best interest of the city. Some of the main points of concern were they want to make sure that food trucks are allowed at special events, as well as create development standards for mobile vendor food courts. So Ordinance Number 2015-235.83 was adopted by City Commission in January of 2016. This ordinance regulates mobile vendor food courts and does not regulate food trucks at special events. In order to open up a mobile vendor food court, it requires a minimum of medium retail, third commercial, general retail, fourth commercial, light commercial, fifth commercial, 5C, use district, and also requires a specific use permit. In addition to meeting all the typical specific use permit requirements, the applicant must also submit a narrative that addresses culinary diversity, park rules, hours of operation, and more. Then an interdepartmental committee evaluates the application. This committee is comprised of the City Manager, the Health Department, and the Building and Planning Division and the Planning and Development Services Department. The applicant must address all comments and meet a minimum score to proceed to the Planning and Zoning Commission before it comes here to City Commission. The ordinance also allows City Manager the authority to restrict the number of approved applications each year. So currently, we have four mobile vendor food courts that have been approved by City Commission. One of those is currently operating. One is under construction, and one is undergoing the approval process. Between January of 2016 and October of this year, there have been zero complaints regarding the operation of the mobile vendor food court, which is operating, and there have been three incidences that have been reported through the police department. One was a hit-and-run accident in April at 7:00 AM. One was an improperly parked vehicle in May at 5:00 PM. And one was a disturbance involving an animal, which was in July at midnight 30. Moving forward, we would like to reconvene the Committee of Community Stakeholders and City Departments to discuss issues they have experienced since the ordinance was adopted and modify or revise as needed. We'd also like to continue researching other municipalities' best practices for mobile vendor food courts and special event use. And ultimately, this would result in amending the Mobile Vendor Food Court Ordinance.
Very good. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate it. You guys keep up the good work, okay?
Next, we have Consent Agenda Items A through J.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Next, we have the Public Hearings. Public Hearing Number Six. Public Hearing in Action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 235-2018-046-S to Allow a Mobile Vendor Food Court, a General Retail Use, and General Retail X for Lot 5, Block 1, Star A Cars, in Addition to the City of Brownsville Located at 6305 Paredes Line Road.
This is a specific use application that was tabled by City Commission back in October. You did request some additional information, including any reports through police, as well as through the call center, which I did just list in the previous presentation. I can go through the presentation again if you would like for the specific use permit.
This is the one on the food court?
Yes, this is the operating.
Asking for one more.
Two more.
Two more, okay.
Anybody want to go through there?
So wasn't there a question about parking? So y'all requested additional information, if there have been anything reported to the police or to the call center since it opened back in 2016. There have been, I'm sorry, there have been three incidences. Yes.
But wasn't there a question about doing eight hours? There wasn't enough parking?
So it is meeting the current city, it is meeting the current ordinance requirements.
Anyone else here on this issue? If not?
The class public carry?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to Grant.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Public Comment Period. We did have no one sign up for the public comment, so we'll continue on to the next agenda item, which we have Items for Individual Consideration. Action Item Number Eight. Consideration and Action to Appoint One New Member to the Brownsville Metro Transit Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Welcome aboard, Mr. Granado. I'm Marjorie Garcia with B Metro. Our Transit Advisory Committee has one vacancy, and we have an interested person that would like to participate, and that's Ms. Norleen Anne Valades. Brownsville Metro recommends your approval to appoint Ms. Norleen Anne Valades to serve on the Brownsville Transit Advisory Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Action Item Number Nine. Consideration and Action to Appoint Five Members to the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. There are currently seven vacancies and five applicants, and they are all eligible to be appointed to the committee should you choose to do so.
I'll move to appoint Melissa London.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. So they're all eligible.
You can vote slightly if you choose.
And we need at least all of them. So I would motion to appoint all of the others.
Second.
Okay. I guess that's a friendly amendment. That's pretty friendly, that's amendment. Anyway, all those in favor of filling those vacancies with those eligible applicants, as there are seven vacancies and only five applicants, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. You've got them all.
Next, we have Action Item Number Ten. Consideration and Action to Appoint One Member to the Building and Standards Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Building and Standards Commission appointments, we have had these applications open since March. The last appointments were in May. Unfortunately, my one applicant was just appointed to the Beautification Committee, so I no longer have applicants. So if you know of anyone who would like to apply for the Building and Standards Commission, we will open up these applications tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Do we have a motion to table?
Move to table. Second.
All in favor, what am I saying?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Action Item Number Eleven. Consideration and Action to Appoint Two Members to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm here to present the new applicants for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So for these board members, there are several qualifications that they must have. So the Planning and Zoning Commission consists of seven regular members. Each member of the body created under this article shall possess an outstanding and unselfish interest in civic affairs. They must comply with all laws applicable to a city officer, comply with conflict of interest provisions of both BTCA and Local Government Code, as per Chapters 171 and 212, and each member must reside within the city's territorial jurisdiction. They must also comply with all laws applicable to a member of a deliberative or non-advisory These are the current members serving the Planning and Zoning Commission. As you can see, Ronald Mills, Miles Garza, Derek Benavides, Troy Woodmore, Francisco Roscoe, Michael Reyes, and Abraham Galansky. The application was open for two weeks, from October 17, 2018, to October 31 of this year. We received two applications. Currently, these applicants are serving the Planning and Zoning Commission as both commissioners, and they just finished their first term.
Would you reappoint? Both members?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You've got your two members. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Action Item Number Twelve.
Consideration and Action to Appoint One Member to the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board.
The Historic Preservation and Design Review Board has one opening at this time. According to our ordinance, for Section 348, 1493, the board members who make up the Historic Preservation Board should have certain experience or qualifications in order to serve on this board and make well-informed decisions for the City of Brownsville. The current position that we have open is Historic Property Owner. So our current board members are listed in the middle, and we have three applicants. One of the applicants, Mr. Eric Gonzalez, was previously appointed, so he is already serving on another board. Mr. Armando Ybarra is also serving on another board, and the only qualifying applicant is Ms. Shannon Ostas.
I'll move for Ms. Shannon Ostas.
Second? I'll second now.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Action Item Number Thirteen. Consideration and Action on Resolution Number 2018-056 of the City of Brownsville, Texas Authorizing Signatures for Banking Services on Behalf of the City.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, upon approval of this resolution, the following persons are authorized to sign on behalf of the City of Brownsville for outstanding payment, Mr. Noel Bernala, City Manager, Mr. Michael Lopez, Assistant City Manager, and myself as the Finance Director.
Approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action Item Number Fourteen. Consideration and Action for Approval of the Proposed Changes to the Parks Advisory Board Bylaws Changing Article Four Meetings.
Good evening. This changes the language from "Meetings of the Board shall be held the first Thursday of every month at 12:00 PM noon at the location given in the public notice of the meeting" to "Meetings of the Board shall be published in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Government Code, posting notice of the date, time, place, and subject in place readily accessible to the general public at all times, at least 72 hours before the scheduled meeting." We seek your approval for this change to the bylaws.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action Item Number Fifteen. Consideration and Action on Resolution Number 2018-054, Creating a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee to Plan and Conduct Local Educational Initiatives, Publicity, and Promotional Activities to Increase Community Awareness and Participation in the 2020 Census.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. This resolution calls for the creation of a complete count committee for the City of Brownsville as we prepare for the 22 census. From now until September 2019, the committee will be in the education phase and will need to plan and develop strategies on how to raise awareness of the 2020 census and drive out participation in Brownsville. This resolution is of great significance to our city, given that it's the first time that a complete count committee is formed for Brownsville. The U.S. Constitution mandates a head count every 10 years for everyone residing in the U.S. Census population totals determine the number of seats each state has in the House of Representatives. States also use the totals to redraw their legislative and school districts. And finally, population totals affect funding in our community. Approximately $675 billion in federal funding is distributed to the communities every year. So it is crucial to make sure that the City of Brownsville is adequately counted to ensure that the city receives its fair share. So for this reason, the U.S. Census has placed great emphasis on improving the quality of data. Various census operations have already been completed over the course of the year. For example, our department with assistance from MIS successfully completed the local update of Census Addresses Operation, also known as LUCA. We were able to update records on 4,540 addresses. And so our department was also able to identify 48 census tracts with high concentrations of embedded housing units, and this was done through a separate effort led by the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council to target specific areas with canvassing efforts. And so the next step is to identify census tracts that can qualify to be divided into two or more tracts. This effort will be done through the participation in the Participant Statistical Areas Program, also called PSAP, and this will increase the city's ability- and this will increase the city's ability to qualify for affordable housing opportunities, among other benefits. And so the Census 2020 is a huge undertaking, and it will require everyone's support. So, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Action item number 16, consideration and action to award a contract for the Services Agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Department of State Health Services to administer the Healthy Texas Babies Community Coalition in the amount of $67,500 from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Health Department is requesting permission to accept a grant contract from the Department of State Health Services, contract number HHS000260300001, under the Healthy Texas Babies Grant Program, in the baseline amount of $67,500 to maximum of $135,000 per year. These funds are your contract period, stating, starting up to acceptance of this grant through August 31 of 2021. This grant would allow us the opportunity to hire an epidemiologist and community health outreach personnel, if approved.
Motion to approve.
Love healthy babies. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action item number 17, consideration and action to award a term contract for real estate services for the city of Brownsville as budgeted.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, staff would like to recommend a term contract for real estate services for leasing of property, city property. There's two companies, Remax, Sun Valley Realtors from Brownsville, Texas, and the second one, Larry Joko, from Brownsville, Texas. This is a contract term for three years, and this contract shall expire September 38, 2021. And upon the expiration, the contract may continue for up to six months, up to the contract expiration, as long as the period requires by the city of Brownsville, for any mutual agreement, if, for some reason, the city doesn't have a contract yet. So it's six months up to the expiration. I'd like to request authorization.
How do you choose those particular agencies?
To the procurement process, we went out for, we went out for proposals.
Okay.
And we had a devaluation committee to go over and select the companies.
How many of the top two? Were these the top two, or how many actually?
Two, two companies only submitted. Yes, sir.
They were the only two that applied?
That's correct.
Okay.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action item number 18, consideration and action to remove committee members from the Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee and appoint their replacements.
I would like to serve on this committee, Mayor, if that is the wish of the commission.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Commissioner Joel Mungia as a city commission representative on the MPO.
Second.
Okay. Now, we have one member already sitting on that thing, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we all approved, and it was Mr. Ben Nice, I think?
Correct.
Okay. And so, do we have to, do you have to remove him?
Well, I think the motion that is on the table right now is the one just being...
No, 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 I understand. But, I mean, and does it have to be for cause, or, I mean, I don't understand what the...
There is no for cause.
Have you looked at the bylaws of the MPO?
There's an item before the commission to replace the representatives of the city of Brownsville and the MPO, the two representatives, Commissioner Nice and the mayor. The only motion that we have at this time on the table is the one made by Commissioner Longoria. I have not heard, and I believe we may have a second, so it would be up to the chair to call to vote.
That was to appoint. Don't they need to remove two?
Don't they have to remove someone first?
I move to replace, I'll withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
I'm going to replace Commissioner Ben Nice with Commissioner Joel Mungia.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have any?
I abstain.
Nay.
Nay. It passed. It's got the four votes, okay? Item number 19.
Action item number 19, consideration and action to appoint a chairperson to the Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Committee.
Mayor, I would like to move to leave you there. I don't even know if I have to move, or do I table? I would like the mayor to stay as chairperson.
Table the motion.
Okay, I'll table the motion, Mayor.
Second.
I believe in you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Action item number 20, consideration and action to abolish the Audit and Oversight Committee.
Would you abolish? Second.
I'd like to comment on the other floor.
City Council, I have a quick question for you. Do I have to abstain from this, from this vote?
I don't see why.
Okay, thank you.
May I comment? Okay. So, dear citizens, some will call me a rabble-rouser, a troublemaker, or a malcontent, but I feel I must bring to light what I consider an attempt to hide the truth from the citizens of our community. This item, the abolition of the Audit and Oversight Committee, is, in my opinion, an attempt to set back the progress we have made over the last year and a half to combat the culture of corruption that gripped this city. Why was the committee formed? You may recall that the Audit Committee was established to expose the corrupt practices being employed by our former fire chief when he attempted to divert the city's ambulance services and the proceeds thereof to a private company in which he had a direct and indirect interest, and to address the refusal of our former city manager, Charlie Kabler, to take action against these wrongful acts. This was an ambulance service that was not even authorized to operate within this city. Shortly after my election, I was contacted regarding this matter by various entities, including the police department, the firemen's union, private citizens, and investigators from certain law enforcement agencies. They were all frustrated because no one would take action to stop the obviously corrupt and illegal acts being perpetrated against the citizens of this community. Who should have taken the action? The former city manager should have taken action, but he didn't. Therefore, the committee was formed at my request, instituted by the mayor, and approved by this commission, with one made vote, which was Commissioner Longoria. After the formation of the committee, the former city manager decided to have his own internal auditors investigate. I say his own because the internal auditors were directly under his control. In other words, he controlled the direction that the internal auditors would take. This structure is directly violative of standard practices relative to internal auditor controls. There is no independence under that structure. The results of the committee's investigation were provided to the commission and the citizenry, exposing the corrupted operation. And in the process and the aftermath, the city attorney was terminated, the fire chief was terminated, and the city manager, Charlie Kabler, retired. Former city manager Charlie Kabler and Commissioner Longoria both requested that an independent audit be performed regarding this matter. The independent audit has been completed and was in the process of being submitted to the commission by the Audit and Oversight Committee. However, now the committee is sought to be abolished. I believe Commissioner Longoria and Commissioner Mungia want to abolish the Audit Committee in order to suppress the audit. Even though Commissioner Longoria and former city manager both requested the independent audit, and even though Commissioner Mungia served on the very committee that exposed one of the most corrupt operations ever encountered in this city's administration, the light was shined brightly on this corrupt enterprise, exposing a concerted effort between members of the city's administration to divert public money into private hands, and it was stopped by this very committee. The committee had recently also been preparing to address the shortcomings of the administration's ability to prevent corrupt practices by recommending to the commission the adoption of a whistleblower policy that would protect our employees from retaliation, from reporting wrongdoing by other employees and their supervisors and directors. As an example of why it is important, I cite the following. When the internal auditors were charged with investigating the ambulance services, they tried to manipulate the results to blame our own Chief of Police, Orlando Rodriguez, who was, in fact, the one who originally tried to expose the illegal operation. Due to the findings of the Audit Committee, the chief was vindicated. In fact, the independent auditors have now recommended a whistleblower policy be instituted. Who will protect our employees once the Audit Committee is abolished? The committee was also going to consider recommending the reinstitution of the city's expired ethics code, which would set up an ethics commission to hear complaints regarding corrupt acts by everyone from the city commissioners on down. This ethics code is essential for this city to combat the culture of corruption encountered here. For example, we have recently hired a new city manager. This code will protect him from interference in the carrying out of his duties and prevent the undermining of his authority and chain of command, and will give him and the citizens of this community a chance for a fresh start. The Audit and Oversight Committee was the only organ of the city government available to address the institutional and substantive problems concerning the operations of the city at the highest levels, and to combat the culture of corruption gripping the city, as proven by the ambulance service investigation. But even more sinister than the suppression of the independent audit requested by former city manager Charlie Kabler and Commissioner Longoria, and the attempt to thwart the institution of the ethics code and whistleblower policy is the following. Recently, a complaint regarding the operation of the Brownsville Police Department was brought to my attention as chairman of the committee, and I had been accused just recently of me trying to manipulate this committee to go after people. This complaint was brought to me. The complaint involved interference with the standard operations of the police department by city city commissioner Jessica Tetra, who attempted to dictate to the acting chief of police the allocation of resources of the department. Commissioner Tetra advocated at the request of a certain patrol officer that change in the hours were endangering officers. Commissioner Tetra's position was that it would be better to protect the bike patrol officers serving the downtown area, rather than the citizens and merchants in the downtown area of District 4. The bike patrol officers had been ordered to begin their patrols during evening hours, since there has been an increase in activities in the area at night. However, upon the request of the patrol officer to commission Tetra, the directive was aborted. There is an audio recording and transcript provided to the committee of the conversation in which this commissioner compelled the acting chief of police to bend to the will of the commissioner of the patrol officer. Could this be another reason for the abolition of the committee? This matter, including the audio recording, should be brought into the light of government transparency and accountability, but now will more than likely be extinguished by the abolition of the Audit and Oversight Committee. I ask this community to watch closely who votes for the abolition of the committee, because it's a matter of good governance. The committee has already proven itself. There's no reason to extinguish the only light currently available to our citizens to shine on the dark deeds of corruption that have plagued this fine city. Take note on who wants to take this regressive action. Remember, when it's time to vote, who stood up for transparency and accountability and good governance. And I tender the independent audit to the city secretary for the record. Also, also, I ask the city attorney to determine that since there has been a complaint filed, and it's on the agenda for this Friday, and there are subpoenas have been issued for Tetra and the officers and Commander Derry filed a complaint, whether she can vote on this item or not, she should be disqualified.
If you're not going to address this, Chair, I will. Commissioner is out of order. This is why.
I yield the floor.
This is why I lose faith in the Chair. This is why. You've been asked by members of this commission to yield, to allow, and you don't. You allow him to continue. That's my problem.
That's, I have a right to discuss my opinion on this item.
I am going to ask.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, okay. I would allow everybody equal opportunity to express themselves.
The comments have already been made. For as absurd as they are, they've already been made, Mayor, and they're already the record. Commissioner has tendered his...
Okay.
I am going to ask the police department. I ask you, as an individual and as an elected official, to investigate what just happened for Texas Penal Code 39.02, abuse of power. I feel like I'm being extorted. I feel like I'm being pushed to make certain decisions here politically, and I am letting you know on the record that I feel like I am being extorted to make my decisions here with the power that my constituents have vested in me.
And she just proved my point, because she should have asked the city manager to do this, not the police department.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Under Robert's rules of order, sir, I move for prior question, and that yields the floor to question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And I moved, again, for like the third time, prior question, and that's when the discussion should have been stopped. We should have taken a vote, sir. It's become a circus.
All right, and I would ask everybody to please calm down for just a second, okay? Take a deep breath. There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Counsel, do you feel like I have any reason to abstain from what just happened?
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. You know, the question was asked of counsel, but counsel, do you feel like you have to answer that question, or do you?
Well, I believe I already previously answered that before the question was called. What I do know is that we have a motion on the floor that has been seconded, and I believe it's been called, so it should be, I believe, the chair's prerogative to call vote.
I'm just saying that we have a motion and a second, and now I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Have you got the vote?
Yes.
How many nays were there?
I only heard Commissioner Nice for a nay. Anyone else?
I'm a nay. I just think that this, whatever has to be brought out, we spend a lot of time and then submit it to the public or whatever, but let it be what it is. It's, I think, it's four?
Yes, can I have the red call, Commissioner Mungia?
Yes, he said yes. So did Commissioner Longoria.
Aye.
Aye, there's four, and three nays, okay? Did you get that, David? Okay, thank you. Next, next item.
Action item number 21, consideration and action to appoint three members to the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation.
Mayor, I'm moving to appoint Mr. Steve Gerret.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I move to appoint Mr. Pedro Cárdenas.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And Mayor, based on our discussion, my chairmanship is, ends, I think, next meeting, so I'm going to move to appoint Commissioner Longoria, and that way he can be our representative on the MPO, and that way...
Do you have to resign or something?
I, I...
Or will you?
Well, the chairmanship automatically terminates, and it was probably my intention to also, after that last meeting, to also step down from GBEC, but at that point, we would have another appointment, and I think we have enough applicants. So at this point, I'm going to move for Commissioner Longoria, and I think our bylaws allow it at this point.
I'm happy to do, I'm just trying to make sure, is, how many vacancies did we have?
We have three, sir.
Okay, so now you've got two already appointments, and now you're, the third one, and that's Commissioner, as long as we're legally doing this, and I'm, I'm okay.
So far, so good, Commissioner. We have, I believe, motion being placed.
I just don't know what, I mean, does he have to sit there and say that Commissioner Longoria will replace him, or nominate him?
I believe that's not the motion on the floor.
Just a point.
I know, but I mean, in other words, appointment to be effective as of whenever you step down, no?
Well, it would be immediate, because we have, you see, Mr. Bennecourt can't be reappointed, Mr. John Cowan expires on 31st, and there's a vacancy. So we've appointed two out of three, and that's why I'm moving for Commissioner Longoria, and that could either replace Mr. Bennecourt, Mr. Cowan, or the vacant position. I would remain at GBEC, but my intention has been clear since the beginning that I would step down, but we decided that I wanted to get at least four members in before I stepped down. That way, there was a transition period.
So we're back to three commissioners?
We're back to three commissioners?
Well, up until next GBEC meeting, when I'm actually allowed to step down, which I was planning on doing probably by Thursday, and that way we could put on the agenda for next Tuesday to appoint one more person.
No, what I'm saying is, at the end of the day, we're going to have three elected commissioners?
Yes, Mayor, for a week, sir.
For a week.
For a week. And...
Okay, we've got a motion. You got a second. All those in favor, Commissioner Rick Longoria?
Second.
Yeah, I think we have a second.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Nay.
Okay.
Would you adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to Brownsville.
We're good.
Motion carries. Motion carries.